Is February fifth, Tuesday at six o'clock. And this is a regular meeting of the city council for the city of Trinidad. Will you all please stand for the case?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Just to remind you, please remember your apps if you have one, and make sure your cell phones are moving. Thank you. First item on the agenda is roll call. Devono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trahill?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Criego? Here. Just to remind those of you in the audience, we have a council member, Ms. Ogletree, who is out of the community, and she will be attending virtually. So if there's something that... She's on the Jumbotron over there. So if you want anything of her, please direct your questions to her. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? No? I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Shu, move, second.
Second.
Trahill, second. Call the vote, please. Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. The agenda was approved unanimously. Item number three, policy items and staff reports. Do we have any? We do not. We have no, okay. Rolling right along. Item number four, petitions or communications. This is the fourth part of the meeting where citizens can come and express whatever compliments, problems, issues that they have or whatever. So just remember that it's a five-minute limit. You will be warned... Thank you. Warned when you have one minute. We ask you to try and wrap it up in that one minute. Okay. First speaker is Megan Creach. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And she wants to talk about crosswalks.
Hello.
Hi, there.
I have prepared a statement, but it is on my phone, so I will be looking at it.
That's fine.
For reference.
That's good.
My name is Megan Creach. I own U.N.E. Trinidad on Main Street, and I'm also a member of the newly nationally accredited Main Street Board. I'm here to talk about crosswalks. With the upcoming addition of the wayfinding signage in our historic Main Street district, our historic Main Street district is beautiful, unique, and more walkable than ever. Now we just need to make it safe. The Main Street Board is eager to partner with the city of Trinidad to ensure our visitors and locals alike can safely enjoy the heart of Trinidad. We are hoping to see flashing crosswalk signs at the crosswalk on Main Street between Maple and Commercial, right in front of Shirley's, and right in front of my building, 135 East Main, as well as the crosswalk between the library and City Hall. The type of sign that is currently at the Main Street crosswalk that sits in the middle of the street is not very effective for a few reasons. Street sweeping and plowing, the sign gets removed and then almost never gets put back. These are up to a citizen or somebody has to call to get it put back into the street. It's also quite low, and with the number of large trucks and RVs that we have coming through, if they don't notice it well before they get to it, they cannot see it. And they also could not see a child of that size. So we are hoping to get flashing signs that would go on the sidewalk. There are some that are solar-powered that can be affixed to current poles. In addition to that, we'd like to see... Sorry, I lost my place here. The rest of the crosswalks on Main Street need to be repainted so that they are obvious. It's obvious that it's a crosswalk. And the Commercial Street crosswalks are simply a pad of concrete instead of brick. Considering that concrete also interrupts the brick around manhole covers and other access points, it's not obvious, especially to out-of-towners, that those are crosswalks. I think simply painting them with the bold white lines that are universally recognized as a symbol of a crosswalk would help immensely. We hope that the collaboration between the city of Trinidad and the Main Street Board on Art Alley A and wayfinding signage for Main and Commercial Streets is just the beginning of a long partnership to keep our historic Main Street district vibrant, accessible, lucrative, and safe for everyone to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Ryan Dunn from the School District.
Hello, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, she was here for better reasons today, but you may have seen that two days after your unanimous decision to support the school district in the GO code grant, there was a publication in a paper where it said that it was being stonewalled by the city. Terrible timing. We had been trying for months to have a dialogue. It had been delayed. I'm sure that wasn't your intention. My apologies. Dear Mayor, city council members, and city staff, I just want to take a moment to sincerely apologize for the discomfort caused by the recent quote attributed to me in the newspaper. The phrasing and timing of that headline did not imply the spirit of collaboration that the city and the school district have been working to build. While there were initial communication challenges during the lead-up to the special meeting, I recognize that using a term like "stonewalled", especially out of context, may have painted an unfair picture about the city's intentions. That was not my goal, and I regret that the quote could have strained what I truly hoped is a growing relationship between the school district and the city. I'm grateful for the city's unanimous support in that grant proposal, and I look forward to continuing our shared efforts to improve the opportunities for students and families in Trinidad. I am available for questions anytime outside of here if any of you have anything you want to discuss. And yeah, I'm very sorry.
All righty, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
It's appreciated.
Before I close, just real quick. About that grant, I noticed it's on here. The next time we would be eligible to apply, it's January. We've already been denied for this cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Miller?
Yeah. Yeah, you guys are kind of missing the boat on that homeless thing again. I don't know why I can't get it straight. I realized about six months ago, five, six months ago, that one big burly guy down there destroyed that one table. I don't even know who it was. Although I have no proof that he did it. He's one of them big guys. He's all mad at the world. His life didn't turn out like he wanted. And he goes out and around and destroys things. Yeah, unfortunately, we have that in society. If I see that going on, I'm definitely going to call the police because it's my taxpayer money they're destroying. I got that. Like, you guys took all the benches and park benches and picnic tables, all that were removed the other day. I'm pretty sure they keep the homeless from using the park. And they, you know, we're still laying in the grass. Nice green grass. You guys water the hell out of it. It's really good out there. And we're laying in the grass, eating lunch. You got... What you got to do is stop watering the grass. Completely stop watering it. Turn it into a desert. Plant some cactus. Or if you want to save the city money for watering, put one of the Netscape things in there with the white rocks. Do that. That's a solution, I think. Or if you really want to get serious about the problem and get rid of all the undesirables, back in World War II in Germany, they had it down to a science, the final solution. Just you could fence in that county jail out there, put in some barracks, and kind of let them sit there until they... You know, until the end comes for them, you know? And they're all emancipated bodies. You get three of them into a chamber then and incinerate that. And the world will get out not to come to Trinidad. You know what I'm saying? As far as I'm concerned, you guys are missing the boat on what to do with the homeless. You know? Park's nice out there, summertime, nice green grass. It ain't bother nobody not being able to sit in a bench. I'm serious. I was up there last Sunday. Had a great time. Anyway, that's my suggestion how to solve the problem. The New York Netscape mark-sharp white rocks they got? Ah, perfect. Anyway, have a good day and all.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, I'm having a hard time reading the second's name. The writing is really small. Waring? Warming? W-A-R?
Warming.
I'm sorry.
Warming.
Okay. Please come forward.
He was in the army. Coronator. Hi.
Hi, there.
I'm actually Jamie Warming, and I have only been in your town a little over a year. I love it here. We came here for a reason, your poverty. We brought our ranch here from Florida to feed people. We don't take care of the homeless. Other folks have that going on. We're trying to take care of the folks before they become homeless. Pay their rent. Let us feed you. We now are partnered with KTS and using their youth out of our ranch to teach them skills. But this homeless population, I don't know. I personally, I think you guys are looking at this all the time. I've never in my life seen such dismay for the homeless. I've lived all over this country and I've served my country. We just stood there and said the pledge for every citizen of this country, not just us, even those who are down or not. We do equine therapy at our property. I go out to that park every Sunday because I am a licensed therapist. And I want to talk to these folks and see what we can do to get them off the street. But making their life miserable or making it hard to feed them, that's not going to make them go away. That's going to make them hungry. Then guess what's going to happen? They're going to start stealing it. Then they're going to end up in your jail. And then the city's going to be paying to feed them anyways and to house them. I have a problem with that. I just can't believe... I love this town and I love the people. I can't believe how welcoming people have been in this town. Small, best small town I think I've ever lived in. And I got to say that. And I didn't even know where Trinidad, Colorado, was when we came here. We got led here, and here we are. That's really all I got to say. I really think that this homeless population needs to be addressed in a different way than trying to make it so miserable that they'll go away because they're not going to go away. It just isn't going to happen. They're going to end up in your jail, and the city's going to pay a lot of money for it. So, Mayor, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next gentleman is... I apologize, small handwriting. Glenn Ballmer.
We're going to pass.
You're going to pass?
Yes.
Okay. Are you sure?
Okay.
Okay. All righty. I have a communication that I was... We're going to work on it in an upcoming meeting. I got a letter from the Trinidad Peer Recovery Co-Responder Program. Colonel Simpelman stopped by my office and advised me that TCF got a grant for $100,000. Just so happened when Colonel Simpelman was in the office, Ms. Marshall spoke... She and I spoke on the phone. And so we're going to have another meeting and see where we can collaborate with TCF and use that money to continue with the co-responder program. So I don't know if you've gotten this, Ms. Marshall, put out.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Council reports. Mr. Williamson?
I just have one item, Mayor. We had recently the South Central Council of Governments Board meeting, and there is not a lot to take away from that other than work on CDOT's 10-year plan is continuing. And I know there's been a significant amount of discussion about the exit exchange plans that we've had in Trinidad. And we did settle on that exit 14 change, and that is finally moving from... I believe it's designated as moving from into the construction planning phase. So soon they'll be sending up bids and that. But I... At some point, we'll see construction start there. So that'll be really good. We also had some discussion as to the type of food that has been being brought down, food distribution, and where, when possible, we're trying to make an inquiry as to if we can be moved up of the list of... Or be prioritized for more frozen-type commodities. But as of yet, you know, it's... There's increased need around the state and some diminished funds. So that may not be changing for the foreseeable future, unfortunately. Lastly, concerning the Council of Governments, I do need to announce it for various reasons. I need to withdraw my position on the South Central Council of Governments. And I've spoken to Ms. Marshall, and we'll have... At the next meeting, we'll have some discussion as to how we can move forward with that. But there might have to be a redistribution of boards, commissions, and representation. So that is my report.
Thank you. May I ask you a question? On exit 14, is it going to stay with the last plan we set?
The diamond?
Yeah.
It will... It's going to revert to a diamond exchange, yep. And then...
Oh, okay.
So as was on the plan during those work sessions, the long sweeping radius that terminates at five points will no longer be in exit.
Okay.
Yep.
Exit 14, for those of you who don't know, is the southbound exit on Commercial Street. Correct. Mr. Thurman, do you have anything to report?
Anything to report.
Mr. Trahill?
So I was asked to be on the Colorado Creative Industries Planning Committee for the Colorado Creative Industries Summit that will be hosted by us. So we will have 300 to average, 300 to 500 artists, elected officials, and business partners descending upon our city next year in June. So we need to make them feel welcome. So we put together a committee. This was the first meeting of many, and it's going to be a long. So that's pretty much what I have. And the creative process is... It's flowing.
All right, sir. Thank you. Mr. Shu?
I do have a report. We're going to operate at the end of the month, so we'll have a meeting then.
Okay, may I ask?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Devono?
Thank you, Mayor. The Los Anamos County Veterans Council hosted an Armed Forces Recruitment Day today from 12 to 2:00 p.m. and was held at Fort Wooten. And the veteran service officer was Matt Dominguez, and he kind of orchestrated everything there along with David Samson, who I'm going to talk about next. And he's in the audience. There's an annual, monthly Veterans Coffee Social for veterans and their guests, whether it's coffee or tea. It's going to be Wednesday, August 27th, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. The location is the Champions Building, 127 North Commercial Street in Trinidad. And David, if anybody would like to speak with him, his information is here, 719-845-4872, or you can talk to him after the regular session is over tonight.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Ms. Ogletree, do you have anything to report?
I just would add that I also will be serving on the planning committee for the summit that's happening next year with Mr. Trahill on Little Forte. That's all.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report at this time. Item six, consent agenda approval. 6A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 15, 2025, and a special meeting, the minutes of July 21, 2025. Approval of the bills totaling $3,825,613... No, sorry. The only big-ticket item on the budget was the RACE grant for $2,058,000, almost $59,000. Item 6C, approval of payroll from July 19, 2025 through August 1, 2025. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
That's Mr. Williamson, second?
Second.
Mr. Shu, call the vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes. The agenda was approved by unanimous decision. Item seven, public hearings. 7A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending the zone classifications for property described as two parcels of land containing 18,075 square feet and containing 22,848 square feet located in Section 18, Township 33, South Range 63, west of the Sixth Prime Meridian, the city of Trinidad, County of Los Anamos, State of Colorado, from community, commercial, and industrial to open. The hearing is now open. Good afternoon, Mr. Mason. How are you?
I'm good. How's everyone?
Good.
So this is the second reading for this rezone. I'll kind of move back to the beginning. This was back in January 7, 2025. City Council approved a contract to purchase property in the Old Trinity subdivision. And then there was that purchase, as well as the second purchase to be coming. This is that second purchase. And this is some of the work we have to get done to get it zoned properly and the boundary lines adjusted to where we want them so we can move forward with that purchase. So that'll be coming forward later. The property is... I walked everyone through it down there by the old city garage. Includes a former Noah's Ark area, a parking lot, the drive to it from Chestnut, and then some open space river, on both sides of it, actually, area. The rezone is for the Noah's Ark piece there and in that road. And this application's been a collaborative effort with our intentions to purchase it. So we've been working with Kip Hamden LLP on that. Let's see. All rezone criteria has been met. Planning Commission recommended approval on July 8, 2025. And I guess the big thing there is the city's currently working on a project to put pickleball courts in. That's actively happening. So this will give us some parking, right, adjacent to that new improvement to that park, and then access to it. And then the river piece of it is a big piece for the river visioning and just claiming ownership of the river. So really good, really good project, really good purchase for everyone. And I guess we've kind of worked on it quite a bit in the past and finally get in there. So that's all I have. I think Mr. Lamb is on as well.
Ms. Ogletree? Oh, I'm sorry. Again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, like, we can hear you. I apologize.
Like, you know, we just want to do our part to help the city. And this property, we didn't have an immediate use for it. So this rezoning is necessary and so then we can complete the sale and purchase, which will be a great benefit. So we're happy to do our part.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Anybody on council have any questions? Aaron? Ogletree?
I think it's a fine idea.
Thank you. Mr. Devono?
No, no. Thank you, Nick and Mr. Lamb.
No questions. No question.
No questions.
Just... I have one question. Just to see how it's going to interact with the rezoning. How long until the pickleball courts are done?
Oh. I'm the wrong guy to ask.
Maybe you don't know this.
Yeah, I don't. I do know that they poured or they're going to be pouring concrete, I believe today, or tomorrow. And then it's post-tensioning, so there's a lot of coming back and toe-titting it. But it's going to be kind of funny because they've been working really hard on it, and then they're going to pour, and then they're just going to walk away for a while. But it's going to cure and set up before then they come back to finish it.
I worked really hard in making that question about the rezon.
Yeah.
We saw what you did. Mr. Lamb, I just wanted to thank you for Kip Hamden's continued support. So thank you so much for that.
You're very welcome.
I have no questions, but I want to thank Mr. Mason. And Mr. Lamb, please mention to the Kip Hamden people that we appreciate the collaboration between your organization and the city. I think it's going to be a win-win for both parties. Thank you.
I will do so.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to work with your people.
Thank you.
We have a good relationship.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience have any comments about the project? There being none, the hearing is closed. Item 7A1, second reading of an ordinance amending the zone classifications for property described as two parcels... Sorry, parcels of land containing 18,075 square feet and containing 22,848 square feet located in Section 18, Township 33, South Range 63, west of the Sixth Prime Meridian of the city of Trinidad, County of Los Anamos, State of Colorado, from community, commercial, and industrial to open. I need a motion? So, Mr. Shu, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes. The ordinance passed, second reading passed unanimously. Item 8A, consideration of the Clay Creek Land Lease and Interconnection Agreement. So who is in charge of that presentation? Where's she going? Ms. Behill? Mrs. Behill?
Watch the dog.
Yep, I will. He's very comfortable. Good evening, everyone. Here we go again. So what you have in your packets is for the land lease agreement as well as the interconnection agreement agreement that we had brought forward to you all last time. The only changes that kind of came late to were the SIRS edits that we didn't get to anything. And I think if you have any questions regarding any of the SIRS edits, plus I think an answer for you. But it's still, this is for the solar generation project that we've been talking about since January. I think it's going to be a wonderful asset. It's going to interconnect with our electrical distribution system. Like I said, land lease is in there, interconnection. The land lease is just for them to set up their, set up the solar farm there. And then the interconnection agreement basically just dictates how they're going to connect to us and that kind of stuff. In a nutshell.
All right. Mr. Downs, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. Mayor Council of Rivers, happy to answer any questions you have, but I don't have anything else.
Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
With the, no, it's a nice neat package. I don't have any questions, but I do think it, and I'm sure Frankie speak more to it, but I think it really does just speak well of the collaboration between ARPA, the city, and looking out for the best interest of our electrical rate payers. So thank you for the work that you put in.
Let's get it on the radio. Once again, I have no questions, but we're in brief. No questions. Thank you for putting it all together. And I think Council Williamson put it all, all the words that I wanted to say. Please be without any, but I thank you so much for leaving on here.
No questions. Thanks. And I think it's a really good deal that ARPA helped sell, makes improvements for our electrical. And I think it will benefit out greatly over a period of time. And it's also a step further to maybe get some more solar down the road.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
I just had a comment that I appreciate that both SIRS and our city attorney had a chance to review it thoroughly, which gives us comfort that it's the right, the terminology used is correct. That's all.
Mr. DeBonan, do you have a question?
No, but it's a great joint venture.
I apologize. Well, that's not good. I have a question for Mr. Downs. What are we voting on the agreements?
Yeah.
And are we voting on the interconnection agreement with the edits on them as they appear? So we won't get a clean copy of the interconnection agreement?
There's a clean copy. There should have been a clean copy. So we included the edit version so you could see where the edits were made. And then there's a clean copy as well. So, but it's two separate agreements. It's the land lease agreement as well as the interconnection agreement.
Okay. I don't see the clean copy, but I'll, I'm fine. All right, I need a motion to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of the Clay Creek land lease and the interconnection agreement. Do you remember? If you remember. I'm doing my thing. Consideration of the Clay Creek land lease and interconnection agreement. As you may recall, the last time this subject was brought up, we decided by vote of council to wait until both agreements were ready to vote on. So I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
I just have a question. Everybody on both the agreement and the land lease, I just wasn't clear about that.
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay, yes to vote. Thank you.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item eight B, rescinding approval of the request to GOCO grant submitted on behalf of Trinidad School District number one. Mr. Dornan mentioned in his comments, the school district. Did you apply for the grant?
Mayor, I have that information.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you. So on the twenty-first, at a special meeting, the council approved application for the grant. Mr. Dornan submitted the rough draft of the proposal to GOCO. That was reviewed by the regional manager for this region, Sammy Trotter, and she gave the feedback that she didn't feel like the proposal was quite ready. She listed some things that she felt like the school district and city needed to work on to come back. So without that approval, we weren't able to actually submit on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Downs and I, Ms. Garrett, discussed this. Because council approved for the record, the application, we feel like we need to also correct the record in that we're not applying. I would also add that Olivia Bichica, the school superintendent, did send an email requesting, pulling back that request to submit on the twenty-fifth. So we have that in the record.
Okay, thank you. Questions from anybody?
No.
Aaron, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Anybody?
I just want to make the comment, I suppose, for the public record, that this is specifically for administrative reasons and in no way reflects a lack of support for the project because we all had very, very clear and I would say full-throated support and understanding of the importance of the project and what it will bring to community, students, as well as our community as a whole. So again, it is just an administrative step that we're taking. I just wanted to be very, very clear about that.
Thank you.
You were clear, I just wanted to do it.
Absolutely. No, that's good. Thank you for adding that. Okay, I need a motion to, for a rescission, the approval of the request for GOCO grants for the school district. Need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Shu, motion?
Second.
Mr. Williamson, second. Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Holgoltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. The rescission was approved by unanimous vote. Item nine A, miscellaneous business, consideration of the appointment of Eric Shepherd to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. Who mentioned to me that Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, I interviewed him today and he said that he had a dress rehearsal tonight to let you know that he's very much interested. Any of us to be on?
And he goes to attend the Lodging Tax Advisory Board meeting this morning.
Oh, good. That's what he said.
Just for clarification, Mr. Shepherd appeared at our last work session and interviewed with us. So I need a motion to appoint Mr. Shepherd to the LTAB board.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Eric Shepherd to the LTAB board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Holgoltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Mr. Shepherd, we want to thank you for stepping up and working with the LTAB board. Item nine B, consideration of a resolution for the change of designated representative authorized to coordinate with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority regarding financial assistance matters. Just for point, oh, you're going to mention that.
This is just simply a housekeeping item that we have to do with the SRF loan, removing Ms. Navarette from there. So we have to have two officers, so I believe we are adding you to that.
All right.
The buck stops there.
I knew that for a long time. I need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thurman? Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Holgoltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item nine C, first reading of an ordinance to extend for an indefinite term the one percent sales tax originally authorized by a vote of the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended six times since, and to provide for dedication of the revenue from such tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance, and setting a public hearing for consideration of said ordinance at six P M. on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. I need somebody to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Mr. Shu, introduce the ordinance? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Trehal, motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Mr. DeBonan?
I think we was a tie. We need an instrument to play on that.
That's right.
I think this heat is getting to you guys. Okay. Mrs. Garrett?
I'm here for questions. As we discussed previously in the work session, this ordinance is to extend, it's extending our one percent sales tax for capital improvement. This portion of the agenda is the ordinance that would be codified into our code should the voters approve to extend the CIP tax.
Okay, that's pretty self-explanatory. Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea. We are so reliant on this particular tax fund to do things that are important for the city, so I think it's a really smart idea. And also, we don't have to waste the money on repeated elections. The only thought I have is that if people are concerned about it going into perpetuity, is there, I want to ask Ms. Garrett, is there a way that some council down the road might decide to do less or to change it in some way? Does this prohibit that?
Look, the voters, well, the city council could always propose an ordinance to reduce it, remove it, what have you. They have to go to the voters, though.
Okay, all right, that sounds great. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Mr. DeBonan?
No, no, thank you, Audrey. Nope. No, none at all. Thank you.
No questions.
I'm really trying not to. That's true. If this isn't, Jermaine, to this discussion, please let me know. But I mean, when you go back to the inception of this tax, if you could capture everything that's done for the city to this date, I mean, it's just an overwhelming amount of improvement for the city. I mean, it would be a vastly different landscape. And I have, I don't have the ability to do it myself, but I think it would even significantly dwarf what has been accomplished with the marijuana taxation, albeit that was a short period of time compared to a long period of time. I get that. But my point is, is it's incredibly, incredibly important, and I know that we all know that. And I think one thing that's important is that it has been, it has been an ongoing tax basis for this town for a long time. So it's, it's important that people understand it is not an increase. And I mean, it does say that, but sometimes it's hard for people to read that. They see the word tax. But I guess my specific question, and I know we discussed it some at the work session, is there a way or hasn't been contemplated to at least have a first blush list of what projects that has done for talking points for people that are able to? Because I know, you know, I know there's laws that we're governed by, we can't print that in the newspaper, but it would be a massive loss for the city to lose this.
We can definitely produce that list for you and have it.
That's.
We will put it in your packets for the work session next Monday.
All right.
If I could, please, I'm sorry for interrupting, just please remember that from this point forward, you can't lobby. You can't, exactly, that's right, photo and dance or anything of that nature. So we have to be careful in terms of making good information.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's one of those things you have to really hope for because it's a vastly different landscape without it. And I appreciate that, unless we obviously have to follow the rules, so.
I'm not going to say unfortunately. We do. I know, it's very fortunate. You're right.
We do, we do, obviously.
That's right.
We have to follow the rules.
Okay, did I get everybody? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams, I have no questions. Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Holgoltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. First reading passed unanimously. Item ninety, first reading of an ordinance submitted to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the regular, regular election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-five. A referendum to indefinitely extend the one percent sales tax originally authorized by the people of, by the people on November fourth, nineteen eighty, and extended by a vote of the people six times since, and dedicate the revenues from such sales tax to capital projects, purchases, and maintenance, and setting a public hearing for consideration of said ordinance at six P M. on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Mr. Williamson, introduce. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Trehal, seconded. Mr. Shu, make the motion. All righty.
Okay, so what this ordinance does is sets the title. And that's what city Trinidad was referring to. That's the trigger for when we're barred from promoting the tax on city time, essentially. So even employees of the city are unable to promote tax during city, city time. On their own time, they're welcome to do that. We've, I've, with help, have reworked the ordinance. The question, I'm sorry. I'm happy to read it and see if it sounds like what council wants. Remember that we still have until, this is finalized by the second reading to amend it if you want to change it in any way. And also, I want to let you know that the question has been submitted to Division of Local Government so that they can review the question for legalities, just to make sure that it comports to paper requirements. If you want me to read the question or not read the question for the record, if you're happy with it the way it reads, it can be fine.
Would you like it re-read?
I don't need that. I did have a question, if I may. I know from, from some past elections, there has been different agencies that are allowed to disseminate information. In this particular one, is there an agency that can disseminate information potentially?
Well, I don't, there isn't an agency that comes to mind right away, right? Like a board or, you know, something that comes to mind. And it couldn't be, it couldn't be a municipal, you know, anyone like in the city's employ.
Right.
I can't think of a city board or commission that would, you know, really do this. And that's getting kind of marginal into whether or not that is the city promoting. So I just don't think there really is. And if something that occurs to anyone, I'm happy to, you know, consider the question and ask everyone in the city. But I just, I can't think of anything right now.
So through the election process, an issue committee can be formed, and that issue committee can promote the ballot measure, actually collect funds, spend funds towards its promotion. Aside from that, if there's individual organizations out there that, you know, recognize that the importance of this, they can certainly promote it.
Certainly, a lot of business owners are going to understand the importance of it.
The Chamber of Commerce.
Any of the local nonprofits here funds by us.
Okay, no further questions.
All right, Mr. Thurman?
No question. Thank you.
Mr. DeBonan? Mr. Shu?
We have no questions already.
Speaking with one voice.
I noticed, no, I'm not reading. I'm just going to, go ahead and make your vote.
No, no, no.
I noticed that when Aaron got up, said he was going to question, I noticed she looked at your watch. Put it up, you can only speak a minute or two.
We're getting giddy in the city. No, no questions. Thank you, Audrey.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions?
No, I like the changes that you made to the wording too, so I'm happy to, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Garrett, also known as Dr.
We're voting on nine E. Call the vote, please.
DeBonan?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Holgoltry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. First reading on the ordinance passed unanimously. Item nine E, under miscellaneous business, first reading of an ordinance amending section one four of chapter twenty-one, special events of the Trinidad Municipal Code to expand on the definition of a special event and setting a hearing for consideration of said ordinance at six P M. on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. I need someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce.
Mr. Williamson, he introduces. Is there a motion?
So.
Mr. Shu made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All righty.
As this tested work session, what this ordinance will do is expand the definition, amend the definition of special event. Currently, as our ordinance exists, it doesn't define city property, doesn't define demonstration, and is very limiting with respect to special event or event. What this will include is anything basically on city property. It's to have control of city property and protect the city's assets as the public property, and it will define what makes up a special event, and it's a, and a more people who assemble. and it will define what makes up a special event, and it's a, and a more people who assemble. And we've also included some examples, so, let me see, is there anything else that we need to know? I also included the entirety of the chapter so that you can see how the amended definition does play nicely into the rest of the code, and it fits, it fits what we're doing with respect to fees that were adopted for all of our city parks and their uses.
Ms. Ogle Tree, do you have any questions?
I do, I have a few. I wanted to mention that I have gotten a lot of feedback from just the word that got out on the street about this, and the understanding that was out there was not real clear. There's nothing in here about the cost of the permit or whether or not there's a deposit, and that's some information that people have, and so I think we should clarify what the, what this ordinance would do. Other questions that I have have to do with how it fits in with chapter 21 generally, because chapter 21 and its treatment of permits is more like what the, what we have been talking about for special events, like needing 45 days in advance of the event to apply for it. A million dollar insurance policy that I just need somebody to explain, does that still apply to a gathering of 10 people or more? Does that still apply to a demonstration of two people or more? That seemed, that seems odd to me, and so I want us to understand what this would do in relation to chapter 21.
Okay. What I will say is that special event, so for instance, let's talk about, I'm trying to think of a smaller scale special event. Car show recently, that was held on Kansas Avenue. Yes, the insurance requirement applies. It was a special event, it's a gathering, there weren't a whole lot of resources that were necessary, but it did affect public property and necessitated some city resources. So yes, we require the insurance on our public property when it's a gathering like that, because otherwise, otherwise the city has the liability.
Okay, but what this does is it changes the definition of a special event to gatherings of 10 or more people, and so 10 or more people are going to need to get insurance of a million dollars to, to hold any kind of event on city property?
No, now keep in mind, remember, it was expanded, but we're also saying any occasion for which a group of 10 or more persons assembles and which obstructs, delays, or interferes with the normal flow of pedestrians or vehicles, vehicles trafficking controls. So it's, it's something that has an impact on that neighboring area. It's not just, I'm going to join my family and there's 15 of us and we're going to the park. It's organized gatherings.
Okay, I, I, I understand that there's exclusionary terms for temporary events and ones that do not have an impact. So what is temporary? What are we saying temporary is? I think that's vague. What is temporary? Is that an hour? Is it 10 minutes? What is it?
Why didn't you see the word temporary?
It's 9E.
Oh.
Is that, that amount of time is not defined in our proposed ordinance?
Okay, perhaps we just need to define temporary.
And then what is impact? What is an impact? That seems pretty vague to me. I mean, I think, I think this is really critical that we understand what we're enforcing, what we're proposing to enforce, because we've got police officers that were going to be expecting to enforce this ordinance, and they need to understand whether or not it's a temporary thing, or is it having an impact? How do they define that? So that is the reason I'm asking the questions.
Okay, so what I would say impact is if it generates extra trash, if there's, there's the potential for damage to the city property, those are certainly tangible impacts that our, our crews would have to deal with from an event.
And if I could please, I think we can add a definition for the word temporary, we can add a definition for the word impact. Temporary, I am thinking something, you know, short duration, say, an hour or two. Yeah, but shorter duration, something less than half a day, but we can work on that wording. Impact having an effect on city resources, city staff, something that is...
Neighborhood businesses.
Sure. I mean, although I think the measure is mostly on, on the city property, but, I mean, that's fine, we can certainly consider that, and we can define those two terms. I see your concerns, Councilwoman Ogle Tree, and we're happy to do that. I just, I would ask that we be allowed to add those terms between now and second reading and do that, and we will add those definitions if that seems agreeable. But I don't want to keep talking, I want you to just...
Just to circle back, what is the, what are we doing about the cost of the permit? And is there a deposit that's required because it's not, it's not, it's not happening?
Okay, so if you'll recall, City Council adopted fees for all of the public properties and various special event permits. So it depends on the nature of the event. We have a full fee schedule that's published on our website. Special events, typical ones, not parades, not, I think it's block parties, those, those have a hundred dollar fee, other special events, it's fifty dollar fee. And then obviously the insurance requirements and also a deposit of five hundred dollars if our property is left in good condition, we're not cashing the check even. We're hoping that in all instances, the property is going to be returned to its normal condition and the funds are returned.
Okay. I think that, I have a concern about that with regard to demonstrations, I'm not really sure that's appropriate, but also a 45-day time period to apply for? Let's say somebody wants to have a birthday party in the park that involves 10 or more people, they have to apply 45 days in advance to get a special event permit? That, I just don't, I don't believe that this sounds workable. I want this to be as workable as possible. I just think that doesn't make sense in the context of what we have been using special events for in the past, and how we've been regulating special events in the past.
Right. So the ordinance reads, the city manager or their designated waiver, the minimum 45-day filing period and accept an application filed within a shorter time period. If after due consideration of the date, time, place, and nature of the special event, number of events on the proposed date, and anticipated number of participants, and the city services required in connection with the special event, the city manager or their designated determines that sufficient time exists for the proper investigation and review of the application. So, I don't think it's, it's ever the city's intent to be punitive or even bureaucratic where things like this come to us.
The 45-day time limit is absolutely necessary for a special event that is going to require an alcohol permit, and without those 45 days, we're really not able to process that timely. We make exceptions every day for special events of less than 45 days when we're able to do that.
The alcohol aspect makes total sense. The demonstration inclusion on this does not make sense, because demonstrations are spontaneous. They don't, you know, like something happens and people are concerned and they want to protest, they protest 45 days later.
Yeah, Councilwoman, if I could please, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt. Further down in C, it says the term "special event shall not include temporary, temporary demonstrations or temporary uses that do not have an impact on city property, facilities, or routine services," and does not obstruct or interfere with the normal flow of pedestrian vehicles, traffic, and control. So I would say that an impromptu demonstration would not be affected by this. No one is going to be...
But, Mr. Downs, don't you see the potential for people to say, to challenge the right to have a demonstration if they don't agree with what the, the point of the demonstration is? That, that seems like that would be a likely thing that they would do, that those people should be stopped from demonstrating because they didn't get a permit, or they didn't pay fifty dollars, or they didn't get a million dollar, you know, it's just, I, I don't know why we've included demonstrations, I don't think demonstrations should be involved in this at all.
So demonstration is in the definitions, it's in five, and then temporary demonstrations are specifically excluded. I'm totally satisfied legally that it is not in any way prohibiting or requiring a permit for a demonstration, like the demonstrations we've had down here recently, the political things we had on the west side of Maine and the east side of Maine, we had two the same day, those I do not think would need to be permitted at all. I mean, those are temporary demonstrations, they're not, and they're not impromptu, I use that term, but they would not have to get a permit under this, this ordinance because it is a temporary demonstration. And really, I think all demonstrations by their very nature are, are temporary, right? They're not meant to be longstanding for a short duration. So I, I hope, I'm not trying to just be disagreeable with you, Councilwoman Ogle Tree, I just, I don't think the demonstrations are required to be permitted under this ordinance.
I don't, I'm not thinking you're being disagreeable, I just want clarity about this, and that's why I'm asking the questions and trying to perceive how workable this will be for our community, and so those are my concerns. I, that, I'm, I'll stand down now, those are the concerns that I have, so thank you.
Mr. DeBono, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Trinhale?
I don't believe most of the things that are actually in here are stuff we've been doing for years anyway, it's just, nothing's really changed, it's just there. So I don't have any questions, thank you.
My silly question is, if it's a temporary situation, demonstration, and then in their brain they say, "I would like this to go on another, another day, I want it to be two days," then would they have to come and handle business with the city?
I still think it's a temporary demonstration, right? There was, yeah, I mean, God forbid.
All right, I'm just asking, if they decided, I want this to be extended. Okay.
Maybe the other thing to mention too is that the demonstrations that Attorney Downs alluded to, they did not require city resources, right? And so I think that is what drove the conversation at the work session, was the impact to city resources.
I just have a couple of comments or potential questions.
Get your clock up.
You can start the tidy out, there's too much. I will acknowledge that there's definitely a lot of interest here tonight in, in I would say against this in the audience, and that's what's really good about our form of government in America, is people are not only asked to, but they're encouraged to come and share their opinion. So I do want to say, and it may be well-known to all of you, but I just want to make it known for certain, that at the next meeting, it will, it will be the next meeting? At the next meeting, there will be a hearing on this where the, the public will have their, their time to be able to give input at this hearing, so, so please, please know that. I was secondly going to say, I appreciate the input from Councilwoman Ogle Tree, she always brings a very unique and thorough approach to this, and I think that's beneficial. But I have no actual questions, Mayor.
You know, I really do appreciate you on this, seriously. Just an FYI, when people hear a million dollar insurance liability policy, in the litigious society that we live in, and the assets and risk that the city is taking on on a daily basis, letting people use our facilities, it's really not that uncommon anymore. That's my, that's my field, and it's, it's pretty common, million dollars is pretty standard these days. I will like to kind of reinforce what Ms. Marshall said, this isn't punitive, we're not doing this for punitive reasons, it's a necessity. City staff and city, city resources are stretched thin right now, and we just don't have the luxury anymore of allowing city facilities to be used when some places destroyed. There's some, there's some situations where a city facility can't be used for everyday citizens because it is being monopolized by one set, group of individuals. I think it's, we have to be fair to every aspect and every segment of this society within the city of Trinidad, and it's not something, I just want to reiterate, this is not punitive. We're not going to put concentration camps up, Mr. Williamson. It's something that we have to do, because if not, if we don't try to contain our expenses, then there's some citywide services that will have to be let go because we just simply don't have the human resources or the financial resources to carry on as we are. In the past eight years that I've been up here, I've seen the city has taken on so many obligations and responsibilities for free, and it was done willingly, happily, because we had the resources to put them on. That's not, you know, that's not our situation, that's not our status right now. Anybody that looks at the news, the state budget is one billion dollars in, in deficit. The bigger metro areas are having millions of dollars in deficit, and if we don't do something to try and stop that bleeding of revenue, we're going to be in the same boat. So I just hope, especially you, Pastor Mason, you understand that this is not out of hatred or spite, it's out because it's something we have to do. So I appreciate you. Okay, anything else? Call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhale?
Yes.
Ogle Tree?
Until I see the clarifying provisions, I have no...
Williamson?
Yes.
Greig?
Yes. So the first reading passes, 6 for, 1 against. Okay, item 10, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to list, on the, at the 623 work session, I announced a staff reorganization for the Economic Development Tourism Department, and I wanted to update you on those three new positions that were created from that memo. Veronica Mays has been hired as our new communications and community relations coordinator. Veronica will continue to work with our Main Street and Creative District Boards, as well as taking on the communications role, and she started that on July 28th. Jeff Crossen is our new Colorado Welcome Center manager. Jeff has been our assistant manager, doing a fantastic job for several years, and I received many calls on his behalf from volunteers at the Welcome Center. We were happy to give Jeff that promotion. He'll be taking on trolley operations in the gift shop that's located both at Space to Create and the Welcome Center, and he started his new position yesterday. Our new Space to Create and Tourism Coordinator, starting next week on August 12th, will be Victor Gutierrez, who is returning to the city after working for the state for these past four years, so we welcome him back and look forward to getting him onboarded. past four years, so we welcome him back and look forward to getting him onboarded. I'd like to highlight the fire department, who had three firefighters that were deployed to the Turner Gulch Fire outside of Grand Junction. These employees were recognized as superior for the work they did, which was performed at a quote, "at an exceptionally high level" in their crew performance rating that we received from the deployment. We've had two deployments this year, one to California and one to Grand Junction. These types of deployments not only offer our firefighters the opportunity to gain skills and training, but they also are an exceptional revenue stream for the general fund, and we're hoping that this revenue will be able to be put back in the department in many ways and help advance several goals that they've set. We started on the process of choosing a new police chief. We received 10 applications, and we'll be narrowing that down to seven semifinalists. We started that process this morning. We've started discussions, as the mayor indicated, for continuing the co-responder program. Co-responder program came to the police department through a grant. That grant is sunsetting. We have identified this program as instrumental to the police department's success in our response to people in crisis, such as those struggling with mental health, domestic violence, and other life issues. We're definitely looking forward to talking with the community foundation about utilizing those funds. Additional updates for the police department will be hiring an animal control officer in the next few weeks. We've started outreach regarding the lodging tax discussion. Our new communications coordinator, Veronica, and myself met with five lodging operators this week, and we're going to be bringing this discussion to City Council on the 25th, talking about the trend of lodging tax, talking about the struggles the operators are having, talking about the impact of Airbnb, VRBO, and those organizations, asking City Council where you want to go with those discussions, and also talking about the third-party operators which are driving most of the reservations that our local hotels are seeing. By third-party, I mean booking.com, things like that. So we look forward to that discussion with City Council on the 25th. The manager of the animal shelter resigned, and we are starting the process of this staff realignment next. Budget worksheets are in from the department, and we have them initially entered in the master worksheet. We'll be starting departmental meetings in late August. Additionally, we'll have our renewal meeting with the insurer, current insurer, insurance provider next week, and then following that, we'll start having revenue projections. So as the budget comes together, once we finish that lodging tax discussion on the 25th, I think you can count on the work sessions in September being focused on various aspects of the budget. So buckle your seatbelt. We're hiring, yeah, we'll add them to your chair.
Okay, thank you.
We will. We're hiring a new library circulation specialist. We were excited to promote one of our longtime library employees to finance department, and so we've got that, we've got that job posted. We're also using this opportunity, when we have an opening like that, to look at the current job descriptions and ask the question, are we staffing this department correctly? Are we meeting the needs of the public and do we need to look at these positions? And let me just further say that everything we're doing is budget neutral. So just like that reorganization that we did with tourism and economic development and communications, it is completely budget neutral. We're also excited to say that we're working with Brian Blazi at the South Central COG, and they have a bus that's retiring, and they are willing to hand it over to us, and we're going to be turning it into a mobile library. So we'll be excited to present that to you. I'm not sure if you're aware, but our schools in throughout this district don't have libraries in them. So mobile libraries are a great opportunity to pull up to the school, have the students come onboard, check out books, and then return on a regular basis. We'll be providing these services in 2026, we hope, to local schools, special events, and the senior centers. So we'll have that as part of our budget request in the CIP. I announced online that we received a $750,000 grant from DOLA for the old sopris transmission line upgrade, that's our water line. I also wanted to let you know that our, you may remember from 2022, we received a congressionally directed spending submitted through Senator Hickenlooper's office. Well, yay, it took several years, but we have it secured and under contract. So you may see that those projects are out for bid right now, those bids will come in next week. We are expecting them to be increased, and we've already started conversations with that SRF loan we were discussing earlier on a possible expansion. Just to remind you, we receive 60% loan forgiveness on that loan, so working with that agency's been very valuable for us. What we'll be talking about in our work session agenda next Monday is a reorganization of the finance and utility billing departments, and then we'll also host a discussion, as Councilmember Williamson requested, on the South Central Council of Governments Board. So we'll have both of those on the work session. And we'll also be talking about our river project. We'll also have that on the next agenda, and I'll let Mr. Downs lead off with that. That's what I had. Oh, final thing, I want to thank Ms. Garrett and some folks from the library for researching our actual incorporation date.
Right.
February 1st, 1876. The mayor has a copy of the act. It's pretty fascinating. We'll be including that on everything we're sending out through our communications. So we are less than six months of becoming 150 years old. One just point of interest, my favorite part of the, of the act reads, let me see if I can find that in my stack.
She's literally taking everything I was going to report.
Okay. I'll end it out.
No, go ahead.
No, no, no.
Just finish your report.
I'll have this for you. Go, go. That's all I have to say.
I'm just kidding, don't you...
Thank you.
I was at the signing in 1876.
Were you?
Yeah, I remember it well. That's right.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman.
Here's the best part.
I don't know what you're going to...
Read that part with their section two.
Okay, so I am reading section two.
He wanted to, so...
I really did. I was just saying, that the act incorporates the town of Trinidad, Section 2, that hereafter the corporate limits of the town of Trinidad shall comprise all territory lying within a radius of three-fourths of a mile in every direction from the center of the intersection of main and commercial streets in said town. Yeah.
That was ours until we were in the...
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, that's it. It's not my thunder. It's really Audra's the one who found it, right?
Right, that is very impressive. So Mayor and Councilwoman, very quickly, I want to say also there are going to be a couple of executive sessions on the work session, which we need to, so we're going to be having a couple of things that we need to talk about. Obviously, I can't comment on those. Also, please check your email, if you would, and for those of you who don't email, we'll provide you with paper copies of what's going on. Also, it's been brought to my attention that there is a potential illegal gambling operation in town that we will be looking at. Detective Abadaka, who's waiting in the hallway for the meeting to conclude, has been working with me on a number of these kinds of things. And by that, they're like, you know, computer games. I know that you're aware of that, but they may meet the definition for banned gambling devices and that kind of thing, but that's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
Mayor, may I ask one question?
Sure.
It'll be, actually, it's a quick comment. I'll be quick. It, it strikes me during the city manager's report, which I sincerely appreciate, I mean, I think that's necessary and beneficial, but it does highlight the importance of how the city functions. You mentioned in your report, and I failed to write down the details, but two, two years in the making was that very large grant with exceptional forgiveness. And so I think what's lost, as people observe the city's functioning, is without those grants, forgiveness, I mean, we're even so much worse off, and the work that's going to be accomplished, that water line replacement, I think that was the one, is going to benefit all of our citizens, but it's just, it's a, it really does demonstrate the level of commitment the city staff on a, on a going even retroactive basis, back to two years, the commitment and level of work that everyone puts into preserving the city's functioning. I just want to thank you on behalf of all of the council for that. Thank you very much.
We have an amazing staff, and this wouldn't happen without them. 28 different departments working in tandem.
It's pretty amazing. Alrighty, thank you. Item 11 is adjourned, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
So here.
Second? Okay, Mr. DeBono, second. Ogletree?
DeBono?
Yes.
Schuh?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griegeau?